So. I shouldn't say rehashing all the stuff, we're continuing to consider. Stuff we have been considering, let's put it like that. Um, I think the first thing we need to do though is approve our minutes. Right, am I right?
Yes, you need to approve minutes from the November twenty twenty three.
Yeah, they all sound like it looked good to me, so. I don't know. Fran, if you had any uh concerns about these minutes, no?
I didn't look at them, it's your committee.
I trust that if there's something that is truly audaciously horrible that Fran might have noticed, but you didn't look at them, so. I didn't see any of the audacious. It looked correct to me. And then we can uh. And I really like the summation of our. The summary rather of our discussion about the. The community engagement, like how we're going to collect this information. So guys, um. I missed the meeting, the January meeting, so I don't know if.
We didn't have a January meeting.
There was no.
We didn't have a quorum.
Yeah, so the the January meeting was canceled uh for the full library board. Uh, so there was no report out from anyone uh on the outreach committee, nor was there any further discussion. But at your last outreach committee meeting, there was interest in continuing the discussion about how to. Coordinate with the fan committee and the budget committee to ensure that. The kind of questions that you all had brought up and the topics you were interested in focusing on um. Were perpetuated. I don't know if folks recall that. At your last meeting, you had talked about the three different types of community outreach you might want to engage in, either something really low key like. Community survey boards and lobbies or something kind of midpoint like a listening session with staff and trustees, or like a full blown survey. And it sounded like the consensus from that meeting was that none of those are really what you're looking to do at this point, either uh. It was gonna cost too much money, or the timeline wasn't right, or it didn't fit in with with.
You need to.
The goals of what you're looking to do.
The right down.
So, um, you had started talking about collaborating more with the fan committee and finding a way to use. The data that you were both looking at for fan to go out. To your networks and for outreach to ensure you're getting the same information uh up directly from trustees to. Uh, your networks in the elected official.
Yeah, and um, I think that we had, we had uh um. Zeroed in on really, if we make the case that we're talking about our collection, keeping our collection up to date. Um, we're making a good argument for budget, um, we could simply ask. Oh, that's interesting, Keith has an AI. That's pretty cool, my Keith's AI assistant. Um, the, the question being that if we are, if we are unified in our ask. Um. Regarding making the case for why we're asking for more funding, when they are definitely going to be doing, it seems anyway that. Announcing a uh budget that is significantly reduced and. And we're continuing to ask for more funding, so we're making the case around something that's indisputable. And that can be shown um by a very compelling. Slideshows and arguments that our collection, especially in critical areas, is um like non fiction. Areas is not up to date, so we are, we have, we have the books in the library that are no longer the standard. Um, and that's just not, um, that's not a look for a. Uh, for a very, very modern uh community like we, like our Board of Supervisors um. Likes to always say that we are, you know, very forward thinking, very progressive. Uh, progressive thinking, forward thinking, um, modern county, we should have. A collection that reflects that, and we currently could make an argument that in certain very significant areas of nonfiction, we do not, so that's compelling, I think. Um. And then we could simply make that argument, we can make that argument, right, like we, that's, I think that's how how we had. Talked about like maybe what if we're gonna be working with man, if we're gonna be talking to the budget committee, I don't know, you know, what, what. A unified message where we're just going to our different networks. And different places and asking people to come out and um. Ask the Board of Supervisors for money, basically, or to not forget us, and this is why. That's my thought on that, so how should we um? In terms of steps, what are your thoughts? Fran, did you have, you, you lit up, I think it's just because you coughed, sorry.
I was waiting to hear from your other committee members, but I'm, I'm all for that, and we'll be meeting in a couple of weeks, um, the um. The fan committee. And, and working out the best way to incorporate the information that was provided, I guess it was the December meeting. Um, of the status of the different collection areas and how we can incorporate. That into the message for the fans and my sort of, you know. I, I've been thinking that, you know, to put the information in the letters. You know, we, we drafted sort of a template for our fans. And so if in there is the information about the collection areas and rather than in our um call number. Range, which of course speaks to library people, but more of the subject area, so that. Then they could personalize it from the point of, for example, I'm very interested in. An X and that collection is really out of date. It is one thought I have, we haven't met to just to decide that, but that seems to me like one approach. Um, with that information.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea, actually.
The crossover.
Yeah. That's a, that's a very compelling to individual people.
Right.
How it affects me and uh my interests.
But I, and I, and I also, I also think about the, the medical area. And, and the whole thing of like, I think that was one of the areas that is, is out of date, and when you think about then. People coming to the library for that and not finding something, so they go to the internet, and that's kind of a dangerous thing.
It's an argument to me.
Yeah.
Um, can I ask a question, Fran?
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, I don't disagree that, you know, it's a little inside baseball to use Dewey numbers, no one's gonna care about the six ten. Subject code, but medical books probably, so are you uh requesting and Sujatha would, are you supporting that request that staff? Kind of broaden the, the topics that we had pulled for you all previously, or are you suggesting we should don't use the Dewey numbers and we instead go with uh? Topical areas, so when I had shared last time, you know, that the. The five twenties were out of date, and then in parentheses it said astronomy, just leave the numbers off entirely and just focus on astronomy, or do you want? Broader bucket categories?
I haven't thought it through.
Well, let me ask you a question uh about that, Jessica, so um when you say, um. See, when, because, you know, like. I guess the way I read, right, just the way I read and process information, I don't know what the five tens stick away, I don't know what they are, so I'm missing. I just know it's there, I'm moving on to the next thing, and it doesn't occur to me, it doesn't, it's confusing to me because I don't care, the information is in parentheses, obviously, I know what friends means. You know, but if you're. Librarianish, is it super more compelling, you know, I mean, if you are somebody, I don't know how many of the people you have on as fan are prior librarians. I mean, not that I think librarians don't care either, like if it says, if it says astronomy, I guess you guys know it's by whatever the heck, you know what I mean, so.
Got that memory.
No, I, I think that when we compiled the data originally, we use the Dewey Decimal Classification because it's easy to. Constrict the, the bands of the information that you're looking for and.
For your search, you do it because of your search.
Yes, but that as you all are looking at communicating this information out publicly, that nobody's gonna care about that. And that if we're looking at talking about, okay, the library's collection of materials for nonfiction topics in economics. Medicine. Uh. Agriculture and. Child and home management, other known as everything to do with your kids, all of those are out of date. That's gonna be a much more compelling case than saying the three thirties, which is also known as economics, the six thirties, which is also animal hundreds, you know. Those are just things that we use to classify and categorize, that's not necessary, and if you swap them and you said economics or the three thirties. People are gonna say, well, what does that number mean, I don't know what you're talking about, is that how many books you have? Yeah, so we can certainly do that, and if you all. When I provided the data originally. We narrowed it down to the. Like the, the tens, so the five twenties or the five thirties, because you can get pretty granular with that. If you rise up to the hundreds level, if you're looking at the five hundreds or the six hundreds, that covers way too many topics. And you might have some classifications in there that are just fine, and you might have some that are incredibly out of date. So if I was talking about the six hundreds, which is where. Uh, agriculture resides, and so does animal husbandry and pets and things like that, that area is very out of date. But this cookbooks are six forty ones, and those are fine. Like, we're not, we're not worried about the cookbooks, because those get used so frequently that the ones that are older get weeded out because they have food stains on them. Hopefully not that many, but you know, some of them.
I think Phil's got his hand up.
Sure, Phil.
When we do this, this is my thought on, on this discussion. Is like when you use the word astrology or something, you know. I don't think there's a whole lot of people interested in astrology, so. What I would like try to suggest is five or six things that are really compelling, like when you mentioned the childcare or the. Things dealing with the family. And then. With that, let's just say we, you know, whatever we do, let's just say the area dealing with childcare, you know. Uh, basically, you could say, you know, we, uh, we have books from, you know, the two thousand and five, you know, somewhere where we. Make it a little more clear what the issue, you follow me, is here.
Agreed, and, and I think that you are absolutely correct, I included in my original presentation to the full board back in December. Just some highlights to showcase a bunch of things, I think you were correct, that if we say that the books on astronomy are out of date, that's not a compelling financial case. It might be interesting to a small subset, as is the one that had the most materials out of date, which was, I still can't say it. Numismatics.
I'm a coin collector, I want everything updated.
Yeah, okay, for Phil, we'll get all of our numismatics updated, but in general, those are fascinating and they're good data points to showcase that. Small collections get, get out of date extremely quickly, because you don't have a lot of books in them, but the ones that are going to really. Make a better pitch for people are the fact that our books on economics, on the military, on agriculture, which includes. Uh, how to do homesteading, how to have a garden, how to ensure that your lawn is in care, how to, you know, all those things that you wanna do at home. That um child rearing is out of date, and that computer books are out of date, specifically computer art, like if you wanna learn to be a graphic designer. Those are things, and there's a lot more of them, which is the slide I have right, I don't know, those are the ones that make a stronger economic case, that. If the library is here to not only provide recreational services, but also educational services to people. And the books that we have on those topics are not viable anymore. What does that say about the, the state of the collection as a total, if we're only just pulling those ones out? And um, I don't think anyone recalls this because it was buried very far in the spreadsheet I sent around. But we also have specific criteria for how long we keep different types of materials, so books on numismatism. Um, we keep for a lot longer, because those ones don't get out of date the same way a book on child rearing does. So you're right, Phil, many of those are gonna have different qualifiers, so you all might come back later and you might say, okay, well, these are the three or four things we think are gonna make the hardest hitting case. And the fact that our books on economics are thirty years out of date, I don't actually know that that's true, I have the data in front of me. But if those are that far out of date, you're gonna make a good case for one subset of people. That fan is trying to reach as they're reaching into your individual networks, or that outreach is trying to reach as you're reaching up to the elected officials individually as trustees. Uh, whereas it'll be a whole different subset of people who are gonna take um. Take a higher level of concern with the fact that our child rearing books are out of dates, so I think, I think you're on the right track of picking a couple of these that make the most sense. Um, whether or not that happens at fan or at here is up to you all, and if you want any additional data, the next fan committee meeting is next Friday.
I'd like more comment on that, like, because I happen to, you know, collect coins. And I have, I have some foreign coins I bought at the coin show for your husband, Jessica, so. If you have coin information from two years ago, it, it could be completely. You know, almost useless now, because the coin market, the, the idea would be if you wanna use, it wouldn't have to be numismatics, but it could be. Uh, you know, we have a lot of people interested in, in collectible stamps, coins, you know, books, whatever it would be. But, but then just say, you know, that. In, in a matter of, of a year, the information we have, a lot of it gets outdated when it comes to pricing or new discoveries or things, and so. Uh, again, if you would use, if that would one that you wanna use, you, you could. Categorize collectibles and whatever people consider collectibles, but they get outdated very, very quickly.
Interesting.
Phil's gonna be our in-house coin expert on this one, because I would have assumed, I erroneously assumed that, you know. They're coins, they're probably fine for a little while, obviously not.
Interesting.
Like they, you know, they basically, like, let me give an example, they had a very collectible coin as a Morgan. Uh, silver dollar. They were made from like eighteen eighty-six through, there were years they didn't make them to like nineteen twenty-one. And uh. Uh, in nineteen seven, excuse me, uh. Twenty twenty-one, they came out with the Morgan, uh, point again, dated twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, they came out, so if you had something from twenty twenty. You're completely, in other words, outdated, if you have an interest in, let's just say, Morgan silver dollars, and that's one of the. Areas that a lot of people collect, uh, the same thing with like Lincoln pennies.
Sure.
Things get outdated because they, people turned up new coins and things, so.
So I went.
And I just wanted to throw that.
I went and pulled the, the backup data on that one, so our collection of materials in the Dewey Decimal Area seven thirty-seven, which is coin collecting. Um, our target range for an age of those items should be within five years old, so it's much better than I thought it was gonna be, but also of the. You know, seven or eight hundred volumes that we have. Only thirteen percent of them are within that age range. So eighty-seven percent of those books on coin collecting are outside of the age range when they are helpful to someone like you, who is a coin collector. Because I would pick it up and go, oh, yeah, this nineteen eighty-seven book about coins looks great, and I would be wrong, because I'm not a coin collector, and that is a great. Illustrative item for this, that if you're not intricately involved in it and you don't know. You might make an assumption about an item that you pick up at the public library, and whether or not that information is still viable and accurate and helpful to the research that you're trying to do. Uh, because I would have never known.
Fascinating, I would never.
So I, I, and I was gonna add that, you know, of the like Covelt's Price, Price Guide for Antiques and things like that, which are similar to what you're talking about here. You know, I. I don't know how, but those are, they used to be annuals that, that we got every year. Um, as part of the collection building, and maybe that has disappeared, and then. I think people would say, well, couldn't you just look that up online, and, and I think that some of those are now, I don't know if proprietary is the right word, but you have to have a membership to get into.
Yeah, they paywalls.
Yeah, paywall, that's what that is, yeah, so the idea of, you know, having. Having the annual guide, price guide, um, and, and there are all kinds of them in the antique field too. Um, so, you know, just as, as a side thing that, because I can imagine, wow, you can just look that up online, and that, I think, is an issue. Like what I brought up with medical information too, I know I was looking for books on, on. After someone has a stroke and the recovery of it, and at my branch, the newest thing I found was two thousand thirteen. Which is eleven years, well, it was ten years old when I found it, but that's, that's in, in the field of medical research, that's really old. And um, going online to find it, because if you, you know, people have the experience, well, you go online and you look up something, and then after that, you're flooded with. Ads, bogus stuff, all kinds of things, because you looked it up online, so. You know, just to, to be prepared for that, but I, I think the idea of offering advocates. Choices of a category of, of the collection to advocate for is a good idea, because another one that I think of, especially in nonfiction, is the, the issue of homework support. Um, you know, books on animals, is it the most up-to-date information for, for kids and stuff like that, so I think, I think that, um, that's, that would be good.
That's a really good argument. A question just on the same, just, I mean, it's related, so you were talking about annuals, Fran, I'm thinking about what. Um, Phil was talking about, it's almost sounds like these kinds of things, and I'm sure that people. Who are collectors do subscribe to various um publications, like. That probably come to their homes, certainly. People who are into philately, numismatics, et cetera, they very often will have periodicals that come to their home. Do we have an up-to-date subscription in such things as that, like collections? I'm just curious.
That's a good issue to bring up, because I think that the periodical collection budget's just gone down and down and down, hasn't it?
Well, part, part of it is the collection itself is less viable as many periodicals are no longer available in print. So we continue to purchase print items for the periodical collection, there just aren't always as many things. Which have a robust circulation enough beyond libraries to. To justify their existence for the publication companies beyond digital versions.
And the digital, like our, um, um, you know, can, um, what's it called again, can? Escaping me. Canopy, canopy, um, can it be different things like that, that we have these online? Things that are available, do they?
Yeah.
Do we have an online subscription to various?
So, there's a lot, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of different ways to cut that particular pie. Um, so our digital resources are varied, and we have digital magazines or periodicals, both. Some that we pay for and some that are available through the Library of Virginia. Uh, Canopy, which is mainly a streaming video service, does have some streaming uh digitally available other options as well, but mostly it's video. And then we've got lots of other miscellaneous databases, some that have individual pieces, like we have a digital subscription to Consumer Reports. Which is available both kind of as a database, because you can go to their website and log in with your account, or there's the. The monthly version that comes out, so there's a lot of different ways to look at it, um. I wanna go back a little bit, if you don't mind, to. Kind of the, the question about. How you all wanna frame this, if you are looking at three or four kind of broad categories, as much as I like. Numismat- Phil, I'm saying it wrong, numismatics?
Yeah.
Coin collecting, as much as I like that, and I do think it's interesting as like a specific data point, I don't know that that has as broad of an appeal. Uh, if you're looking at it, just kind of. From a point where you're trying to get money. Unless you're gonna say like, that we're gonna upsell coins over the years and make enough money to bounce our budget that way. Um, is there any additional kind of information gathering or data work that staff can do for you all that would help you identify where you wanna pinpoint this?
I'm thinking definitely that the main areas that you were talking about, say, things that would encompass gardening, childcare, um, pet care, medical, um. Uh. Technology, I don't know what the technology, um, the updated to is of our technology. Collections, but they, they're like this, right, so they change so fast. Um, what our online subscription stuff is for those kind of. If this, if the budget could ever include something like that, boosting a particular subscription to particular categories of um. Periodicals, I don't know if that's even something that. Is possible to look at, but you know, there may be categories that are things that quick change. That do have online subscription stuff that keeps people at the. Cutting edge of stuff that might be really compelling argument, especially in the areas of technology, medical stuff, et cetera, that might be able to be maybe. More affordable, because they're online, and secondly, more useful because they're more up to date. That's also something potentially for us to look at, um. Yeah, Fran.
Well, one uh person that I was recruiting for an advocate and, and has, has been recruited, she is on board. But she brought up the issue of travel books, and then we both started talking about how when you go to a branch and you look for a travel book, it's impossible to find the one that you want. And I, and, and it's funny, because I think. My experience at TJ, TJ is right on Route fifty and was, is sort of what I call a collector. Branch where a lot of books get returned there, and so there'll be a lot of some travel books, but not the range, and I don't know. I don't know if that's a solvable problem in terms of, um, you know, when you used to have branch ownership. You knew that your copy would come back, but with floating, it, it, you know, you definitely need to rely on reserving a book, which is fine. Um, but it's, it's, and I don't know if that, it's not an issue that needs to be discussed right now, but just that, just to get it out there, that travel. Is something that an individual brought up to me, and you know, if somebody brings it up, then there's probably other. Uh, concern about it too, so.
Travel's a great, it's a great category to include, because I think people really do love to.
It is, and travel books are actually not in as bad a condition as some of our other collections, but they're not great, that's not actually saying too much. Uh, the travel.
They're not ten years old.
Yeah, I just look at the um. Nine tens, which is where a lot of the travel books live, are, our. Weeding range for that is usually about three years, because you wanna make sure those materials are new and current and not covered in travel grit and all those things. So within that very narrow band, which we use for that one, about half of the materials are in that range, so it's actually not. Not nearly as bad as some of the other ones. Um, of course, that means that half are out of the range of being three years old, and Fran, I'd be happy to talk with you offline about the floating collection, we do. Rebalance those regularly, but it's just the. The volume, we've got about seventeen thousand travel books. Um, across the system, but many of them are checked out at any given point in time.
Yeah.
Those happy travelers in Fairfax County.
Oh, is that, um.
And I'm fine with floating, I don't need, it's okay, I just threw that out there, yeah, I'm fine.
Oh, is it, is that, is travel a category, um?
I think it could be, I, I mean, it's probably a less economically impactful category, but it is certainly a recreationally impactful one.
Yeah, right.
And, and I've noticed um that the travel books, things like the Lonely Planet books are not necessarily. Republished every three, two or three years, some of those may be more like every five years.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you may be tossing something for being more than three years old, but it's the only one we have on a particular place.
Which is why we're gonna toss it, and it's still there, dragging down the weighted average.
Right, right. Um, can I ask a question, it came to my attention the other day, we no longer have the historic New York Times subscription. I don't know when, when it disappeared, I went to use it and it was gone, and staff said, oh, we dropped it. Were you able to pick up a lot of other things dropping that? Because I know.
Follow up with you offline about that.
Okay, okay. One of my longtime fans.
Sorry, yes, got dropped in January.
Okay.
So, um, with regard to directions to staff. Um, if. Here's what I would say, if you guys have insights that we have not. Like, when you're looking at stuff, if you have insights along the lines of, like you just said, economically compelling. Or even emotionally compelling uh for a community, there could be things that. Maybe are lesser of an economic argument, but it doesn't always have to be an economic argument, you know, just something that is of community value. Um. Or something when you're doing this search, I don't know how to direct it, because I don't really know how it would pan out when you start looking at stuff.
No, it's fine, so we, we started doing some analysis of the data, which Tech Ops already compiled and which was shared with you all at your December board meeting. But um, I can kind of re-mudge things around and try and provide some. Thematic areas for you all to consider at the fan committee meeting, which will be a week from today. And I certainly think that there are some in there that would fall into both of those categories, there are definitely some that would be more emotionally impactful, maybe than um. Than economically impactful, I would think about like the category of pets, so the category where pets live is also incredibly out of weeding standards. And if I think about that from an economic standpoint, okay, does it really make that much sense if. You know, I'm gonna go pick up a Golden Doodle and the book I'm getting is ten years old instead of nine years old. But if I'm looking at it from more of an emotional standpoint, and it's a book on, you know, best practices on grooming. Or um, how to find a really good breeder locally that you know is following safety standards, those are definitely things that people care strongly about. But might have a less of a financial impact on the bottom line, so I will work on both those.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, and I think that when we are making our argument to our. Uh, fan people and the people that we have doing outreach with us and reaching um out to the community to, to, to generate more interest in the. In, in making the argument and contacting their people um for funding that if. If we have thought about. How to articulate why an emotional argument could be compelling to. Your supervisor, especially if you don't know your supervisor, if you know your supervisor, it's much easier to make. That argument, because they know what your friends for a reason, they know what's important to you on some level, you can know what's important to them. And it's easier to make the argument, but if you don't, if you're approaching somebody and you've never met them before, then like, um. I think there's sometimes like, you know, uh, elected officials really do rely. I think there's sometimes, like, you know, elected officials really do rely on their constituency to point out perspectives that they haven't considered before. So if we are helping, think of a lot of perspectives, because we're spending a lot of time thinking about it, then we're helping our the constituents also think of other ways in which these arguments are are compelling when they go forward to make these arguments to others and to their supervisors.
Well, you may have individual, so for for outreach in particular, as you all are crafting points for your individual supervisors, each one probably has some district-specific things that will be a harder hit for them than others. So I think about one of the categories that we identified as being very out of date is about military sciences. And if I am in the districts that are joined for Bell War, that potentially is more impactful than if I am in, I don't know, Sully District. Not that it's not impactful for Sully District, but, you know, Fort Belvoir is right there in in Mount Vernon. And if I am in, I don't know, Drainsville District, then looking at the books related to kind of the economics of things might be a little bit more than in some other areas.
Conservancy, like people in Great Falls are super, super interested in conservancy.
All the law books, making sure that those ones are up to date. I think law was actually not too bad. That one's which, that's an area we try very hard to make sure we do not have anything that we're aware that was out of date available. But, you know, each each district may have things that ring more true for them.
You make me think of environmental issues, which I would think span different call numbers, too, but.
Yeah, there's a lot, like, when you were talking earlier about collecting things, about stamps versus coins versus antiques, those are lots and lots of different categories. And we have some definitely that are standing orders. So like, you know, we were talking about the travel books earlier, many of those are on our standing order list. So we're already queued up to buy more copies every time something comes out. But as Dan mentioned, maybe they only come out once every five or seven years. And in the meantime, the books that we have are getting out of date, and, you know, a little musty and a little fussy. But some of those collector ones, we try and keep up to date, just depends on if they're still printing them and how many are available, and if they're used, if it makes sense to buy that many copies.
Anyway. Yeah, I think that that, I think that what we just said, if we, what we, what we've just discussed with Jessica makes a good argument for a place to start, would yield a good discussion for our for our next meeting, or whenever you are able to to do that, if you have something to start with, because like, I really feel like Diane's original two years ago, whenever it was that she gave us our first presentation about this specific topic, was super compelling to us, to 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 the board, was, I think, super compelling. And 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 be making it more granular, just granular makes it an even more clear and compelling argument to to people. So I don't see it getting, it's only, it only becomes a better and more refined argument with the analysis. That's what we wanted to talk about. Was there anything else we needed to talk about?
No, at your next committee meeting, which will be mid, mid-March-ish, that'll be when we get back on track with the quarterly talking points as well. And I'm sorry, Phil, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Let me make one more comment. We were talking about like sending out the information to people that might write their supervisors. Like, I'm gonna use the word, I'm kind of lazy, and there are several things when I get from different groups. And they have everything like written out. So basically, all I have to do is put my name and address in. It, I'm sure it has less impact than if I sat down and wrote a personal letter and sent everything out, but I think you get more more response if we had something that was real simple for people to send to their supervisor. That that's just my thought.
I completely agree. And I think that I we could, we could even offer like varying levels of what you wanna talk about, like the if you, for sure, there are gonna be like, let's just say, even the majority of people who would want to be able to slap their name on something and send it off, for sure. And then you're gonna have a different group of people, subset of your associates who are really interested in the argument, wanna hear and talk about it with you. And once they've heard and talked about it with you, talked about it with you, they'll feel more confident to, in their arguments when they approach their other people, supervisors, whomever. And then there are gonna be those people who really, really wanna know, put down and dirty, and are very close with various people that they wanna get involved. So I think that for sure, we would, we would have to have all versions. So we'd have to just have a simple thing that you can just hear some arguments, pick the one you want, or use all of them and send this forward. And if you wanna know more, talk to me a little, we'll, we'll talk more. We can talk about any of these subjects and then proceed from there. Cool? I don't have anything else to say.
Do you have, do you want to comment on other, on outreach stuff? If we're finished with that, I have an outreach.
Please, that was, that was what's on the agenda, so without further ado, go ahead.
Okay. Well, as you know, in Mason District, we have a new supervisor, and so he's already put out a, an online newsletter. And he's named Chris Delta as his library liaison, and that's the first time there has been a library liaison on on the supervisor staff. So, and Chris Delta's, she was with Penny and has is staying on with Andres, and I already have a really good relationship with her, so I stopped in to see her a couple of days ago. And she's planning on attending the library board meeting in February, and he re, he's really interested in the whole social media realm of communication. So I'm very excited because I sort of just, you know, the previous supervisor had a different approach. And and I don't think our information went anywhere. So I'm really excited that, you know, we will, we will, we will have more of a presence in Mason District. And I mentioned to her about the, I was, you know, telling her about things that she might not know. So we're talking about the foundation and the scholarship, and she was very excited about publicizing that. And unfortunately, the undergraduate deadline has already passed. But it's something that we can plan on having, you know, advertised in Mason District for the future, which is really good. So I'm I'm excited about the new approach. I think it'll be great.
Well, I can, I can say that the the next thing that any trustee can share with their board member is gonna be the blurb and graphics for the Staff Excellence Committee, which will be outgoing uh, next week, and will open on Thursday, February first. So I'll have that out to all of you on Wednesday.
One more comment, none of you thanked me, but like I was in Florida, and the reason you all had this great weather, I brought it back for you.
Thank you, thank you. You're too good to us.
And like, and who knew Phil's hidden depths with all of this information about these coins and stuff. I'm like, wow, very interesting stuff. Very, very cool. You never know what people are interested in. That's pretty cool. Anyway, so anything else that we want to? I think I know a lot of us will be at Fran's meeting next week, so where the paths will collide, they shall. And that's all I have to say. That's it. And if we're okay to adjourn the meeting, you can adjourn the meeting.
Everybody have a great weekend. Thank you.
This is Japa.
Yeah, thank you.